Members, it's time to get started. Please be seated. We'll start very soon. First of all, I'd like to welcome the Secretary for Development and his colleagues to attend our meeting. They will be answering questions on planning and lands. We'll deal with works in the next sessions. If we don't have, if members don't have sufficient time to raise questions, you can put your question in writing and hand them in today or to follow up the matters in one of our panels. Secretary, I would like to thank members for their interest in the draft estimate of the Development Bureau. My respective controlling officers have provided answers to 203 written questions. For members accounting for the use of resources under the purview of land planning and lands, we're here to respond to any further questions that members may wish to raise. The details are set out in my written speaking points. In order to save time, I'll pause here and let members raise questions now. Well, that's very good indeed. Secretary, here are the members who would like to raise questions. Mr. Chairman, General M. Tam, Dr. Kwok K, Mr. Haudenok Chow, Mr. Kenneth Lau, Dr. Lo Kwa, Mr. Alvin Young, Mr. Nathan Law, Mr. Lo Kwok Fan, Ms. Taya Chan, and Mr. Chan Chan Ying. Mr. General M. Tam, well, my question is about 2325. We are very concerned about the mini-storages since, according to the reply, 090. You set up a team of 40 officers to conduct joint operations on mini-storages. And according to the reply, in terms of orders, there are 305 for the repair and maintenance and removal. Only five have been discharged, removal orders and repair orders. How much longer are you going to wait before you enforce the orders? Are you going to enter the charges into their land titles? I'll ask Mr. John to answer the question. In our operations, we have to handle 885 mini-storages. And 87 were found to have closed down. So we have to deal with 585. We have inspected 864 mini-storages. We are issuing the removal orders and repair orders, including nine removal orders, nine repair orders, and another cessation order. And how can the orders be satisfied? Well, we are mainly concerned about the way of passage ways and also the routes of escape. Well, I'm asking questions based on this reply of my question. In paragraph five, you said that only five orders have been discharged, but you are talking about a bigger number. Of course, that's better. But compare that with 305 removal orders and 505 repair orders. Only a small number has satisfied your order. It's not satisfactory. You have 800 other mini-storages which you need to inspect. You've almost completed the inspection. I'm not just concerned about the orders issues, but the time that you give them for compliance. And if they don't comply, what further legal action would you take? That's my concern. Can I have another reply, please? Director of Buildings, if they do not comply with the order, we would initiate prosecution. How much time is required? Six months. Since June 2016, you have engaged these people to issue the orders. It's about April 2017. So in some of the cases have exceeded a six-month period. How many of the cases have yet to be prosecuted? Most of the orders have not exceeded the six-month period. So we have to do the inspections first before issuing orders. Are there cases whereby the order was issued more than six months ago? I don't have the figures with me. Can we have the figures after the meeting? Please do. Please tell us what options are open to you after six months? If they don't act on the orders, Chairman, when the, with the expiry of the six-month period, and if the owner doesn't give us any good reasons, we would initiate prosecutions. It's about 165 brownfield sites. 131, 153, small houses. The replies are not sensible. We asked about statistics, and they are almost drawing a blank. And they are talking about some studies being conducted. On the 11th of January 2012, Mr. Li Wen-Tat in this council raised a similar question. The government answered in no uncertain terms. There are different sites, including brownfield sites, green zone sites, and the applications for different land sites. There was the answer given in 2012 that you don't have anything to offer about small house applications. It said that there's no statistics, no information. If you don't want to answer, say so. How can you answer our questions like that? Okay, if you have a study on brownfield sites, that's okay. But how come the government doesn't even keep any statistics? We're asking for some basic facts. For example, how many sites have been granted with STT? Why have you refused to give us the figures, Secretary, in answering members' questions? If we have the information, we would certainly reply to members. Well, you don't have anything to show what the government did in 2012? What has prompted the change? I'll ask Ms. Ling to respond to the question. It said that the government gave us different answers previously. I don't, I do not intend to offend anyone. But in 165, the answer is asking questions about STT related to brownfield sites. And we have explained that we don't have a precise working definition of brownfield sites. So the lands department do not have any statistics on brownfield sites. If I am to do a follow-up job, I would have to search through the 5,000 STTs and make a judgment based on the government's perception of brownfield sites. We have more than 5,000 STTs. And we have statistics on how many are related to housing, how many related to works projects, how many related to NGOs. I have to stop you. I don't have sufficient time. In 2012, agricultural zone, green belt, there was this breakdown given us. Don't try to fool us. If you say you don't have a definition of brownfield sites on which you can rely to differentiate different STTs. Well, I don't accept the reply. I would like to get a supplementary reply. Mr. Haudenok Chow. Thank you, Chairman. It's a reply 169. The question is raised by me. The government has given a detailed reply on the land use under planning. In 2017, 2018, there will be a report on the brownfield sites in NT, on existing profile and operations of brownfield sites in NT. Target completion date is 2018. So this is a study on NT brownfield sites. My question for the government is that in this report to be published in 2018, can you provide detailed information on the prosecution arising from illegal land use? And can the report also tell us the locations of such brownfield sites for public information? Secretary. I'll ask Mr. Lee, Assistant Director or Director of Planning, to say something about the brownfield sites study. Thank you for your question. This study will involve a comprehensive survey in the NT. On brownfield sites, we'll look at the operations involved and modes of operation there. We'll basically try to ascertain the current uses. This study is not linked to our enforcement work. The enforcement is done on a case-by-case basis and also we'll try to rectify land use. And if there is evidence, we can issue summonses. This study is just a survey on the existing profile and operations of brownfield sites. And then we can share with relevant parties the findings of this study. Chairman, I'm just giving you this example. For example, DVBPL 172, when we asked about unauthorized developments involving farmland, agricultural zone, or greenbelt zone, you're able to give us figures. So I believe you have done the best you can. So is it because you don't have a clear definition of brownfield sites? I would like to know whether through the study, you can actually give us a comprehensive picture on prosecutions. I believe some colleagues here would like to ask for such information. Then in the future, when you, you'll be able to answer questions on unauthorized land use, such as those on involving agricultural land and greenbelt zones. But let me say something about brownfield sites and the study. First of all, the study will enable us to tell what are brownfield sites and also the distribution, the kinds of operation on these sites. And then we can develop a long-term policy on how to deal with them. So we are moving towards this goal. And then at the same time, we can take a continual enforcement action against unauthorized development. Mr. Kenneth Lau. Hong Kong is suffering from shortage of land. And therefore, the government must carefully tackle problems associated with brownfield sites. And you are going to engage a consultant to conduct a study.
And we should wait for the result to be, the study to be completed before we formulate any policy. And yet, on Tuesday, the government announced that there will be a tightening up on the application for STT sites to resolve the problem of unlawful application. So in terms of the new brownfield sites, there'll be a vetting procedure such that the relevant applicants may be turned down for any renewal application. In relation to this new policy, I want to know whether there may be any impact on the survey on brownfield sites such that it cannot truly reflect the demand for brownfield sites. And also, at present, many brownfield sites are deserted government land, which only covers a very small area, some 10 hectares. And these sites may be surrounded by other private lots or village houses. And in an event of unlawful occupation of government land, the land would be fenced up. But if the land is not properly managed, there'll be the problem of rodent and vegetation affecting residents nearby. Will government deploy more manpower to address the issue of hygiene and environmental problem caused by unmanaged deserted government land? Well, let me just say something about the tightening up of the policy announced on Tuesday. Well, we made an announcement on Tuesday in relation to unlawful occupation of government land, which is not covered by any STT. Our announcement already made it clear that the line should be drawn on the date of 28th of March, such that after the announcement, if somebody unlawfully occupies a piece of government land and if that person then applies for the STT of the site, then the application will be rejected. But before that date, if unlawful occupation of government land already exists and if the applicant then files an application, we'll still consider the application. Only that in the press release, we already mentioned that we will tighten up the requirements. Some of the measures are as follows. When we process the applications, while the applicant may need to go through other procedures, such as town planning procedures or local consultation, which may take, which may take time. And yet, in the process, the applicant will be required to pay rent to the government. And we will also demand a punitive deposit equivalent to one year's rent before the application will be entertained. We're trying to plug the existing loophole. Because at present, when the application is being processed, the applicant will still be able to occupy government land unlawfully without compensation. I understand that there is some misunderstanding. Some existing STT tenants may be affected. But in fact, we're referring to enforcement arrangements, that is, for cases of unlawful occupation of government land on which the applicant hasn't made any application for STT. We are just making this announcement such, so as to remind the applicants that we are not going to regularize any unlawful occupation of government land from now on. Whereas for existing cases, we will continue to process the application. Dr. Lo Kwa, I'd like to ask about DVBPL 185. It was a question raised by me in relation to the increase, the measures to increase land and housing supply. The government's policy is that for greenbelt sites zoned for, some greenbelt sites with low ecological value can be rezoned for housing development. And in the reply, it is said that some 150 potential housing sites have been identified, some falling within the greenbelt zone. And according to the reply, some 70 sites fall within greenbelt zoning, with a total area of about 150 hectares, accounting for about 1% of the total area of land zoned greenbelt over the whole territory, and would be able to provide over 80,000 flats, over 70% for public housing. But that was the announcement made in the policy address in 2014. That was the vision. I'd like to know the actual implementation. In the reply, it's also been mentioned that in the policy address in 2013, there were 42 sites zoned or rezoned for residential use. But some of them are very small, of about 0.12 hectares. And I'd like to know the actual implementation of these rezoning proposals in greenbelt zones. Can they really address the housing issue? I'll defer to Mr. Lee to reply to your question. Thank you for your question. In the policy address in past years, altogether, the government has proposed 190 potential sites, most of them falling within the greenbelt zone. 94 of them have gone through the rezoning procedure, which means that we can move on to the implementation stage. As for the 20 sites, they're still being processed, and we will work on the remaining ones. And that's more or less the current situation. Chairman, in that case, I'd like to ask a supplementary question to get more information. I really want to know more about the actual implementation. And from the reply, I heard just now, there is progress. But on the one hand, you need to complete all the statutory procedures. And on the other hand, when these sites are used, structural, infrastructural support is needed. How, planning for housing is required. So I'd like to remind the various departments and bureaus to have a better coordination so that these sites can bear fruit as soon as possible, in particular, on the point of public housing production. Mr. Alvin Young. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask about question 1892 related to brownfield sites, a question put by me. In the reply, we understand that the government will only conduct a study on the locations and use of brownfield sites, and it will only be completed in 2018. So when asked about the definition of a brownfield site, does it mean that you will repeat your answer in the reply that there is no consensus on the definition of brownfield sites? Yes, in fact, there is no precise working definition of brownfield sites. And in fact, for Japan, for US, in Hong Kong, there is no standard definition of brownfield sites. Well, the broad concept is that brownfield sites now refer to deserted farmland, currently used for storage and backup. And maybe I'll defer to Mr. Lee to explain about the current situation of brownfield sites. Well, we are in the process of finalizing the consultant to be engaged. And at the next stage, we will commence a study. The study is expected to be completed within 2018. The study will comprehensively survey the situation in the new territories, including the profile and operations of brownfield sites. In this study, we'll also looked into a possible definition of brownfield sites. Chairman, I want to point out that if the government takes so much time just to find out the definition of brownfield sites, then I'm disappointed. I think we have a broad consensus in the community that deserted or that deserted or destroyed farmland, agricultural sites, and industrial sites. In fact, back in 2015, an organization, a community, already conducted a study in this regard. Does the government know about it? Or what is the view of the government on this study? In terms of land use and land supply, brownfield sites have always been one of our options. In our planning initiatives in Fanning North, Kootong North, Hung Shui Kiu, Yuen Long South, these are the three major strategic development areas. And we'd like to take a comprehensive development approach to further enhance and optimize the use of land. And we have 340 hectares of brownfield sites included in these development areas. About what Mr. Young mentioned, we are working on it. And this is an ongoing initiative. We didn't start in 2015. For Kootong North, Fanning North, in fact, we already conducted a detailed study back in 2009. Well, if like Secretary said, there have been relevant preparations and studies. I really don't understand this point. In my question 1892, my first question relates to the study on the existing operations by the government in the past five years. And I asked for a breakdown of the figures. I asked for the breakdown by 18 districts. Why is it that the government is unable to answer such a simple question? Well, like I mentioned just now, if we have the information, we will make the information public. But we don't have the information at hand. Mr. Nathan Law. The first question is DVBPL 025 about POSPD, Public Open Space in Private Developments. Recently, in the media, one question has been raised. There's been a lot of so-called ghost POSPD because it's not accessible by the public or that it's used by retailers, such as Tennis Garden, and also in shopping mall, in the sitting-out area. These open space has been used as part of the addressable dining. In the government's reply, however, the government only said that the owners and management companies of the POSPD can review the needs on a regular basis. So the government hasn't answered my, our question. There is no way the government can exert pressure on the owners and management companies to rectify the problem. I want to know whether the government will consider views in the community. For example, more, clearer criteria can be set. Apart from the Public Open Space in Private Developments Design and Management Guidelines published in 2011, there should be other criteria to make sure that the POSPD will be accessible by the public instead of being used by private developers. Secretary. Now, we have the set of guidelines on the use of public open space in private developments. Mr. Nathan Law asked about our future work in new development projects where there are POSPDs. We would be happy to take views. But the point is, the guidelines published in 2011 are not binding. Would you consider a more forceful option or to make sure that the problem of POSPD being unlawfully occupied will be resolved? If there is a breach of the land lease conditions, we'll definitely follow up on the case. If there are details of the case, our colleagues will be happy to follow up on them. Maybe I'll defer to PS, Mr. Wong, to say a few words. Well, let me supplement. In recent years, in our recent land sale programs, if at the early stage, we, if we're talking about cases of, cases in the past, there might be POSPD located on a podium level, and residents may be affected if the public could access the space. So we have stopped the practice. For example, for private developers developing a shopping mall or a hotel, we now want to make sure that the public open space will be open to the public. As for the existing POSPDs, I don't think it is right to apply the new guidelines to them. Also, in fact, you do have rules, you have guidelines, only that they are not binding. My question is whether you have anything that is binding. It's really ridiculous. According to the media, we have several 10 shopping malls having the same problem. If there is no deterrent from the government, the developers can just ignore the government, and that's the biggest problem. I've spent four minutes on this point. Would the bureau please answer me whether you will consider imposing any deterrent measures with punishment to address the issue?
We need to return to the basic fact, whether certain acts are against the law. If it is... If it is, if it is, we will take action. I think the member is asking about criminal sanction. If we look at the lease, it's a contract. There is no criminal liability. So the question is whether you're going to impose criminal liability. Please look into this. Mr. Lau Kok, Nathan Law, Mr. Lau Kok Fan. So you are now taking action in accordance of the lease conditions. Previously, there was the scheme to revitalize industrial buildings. But some artists, bands, people have told me that they could only survive in industrial buildings because of high rental. The enforcement action taken by the lands department has stifled their room for development. Will the lands department do something to help them for the revitalization, revitalization scheme? They will involve the entire building. What support will be given to these operators? I'll defer to Ms. Ling for enforcement action against industrial buildings. Well, in our enforcement work, we face two diametrically different camps. One would ask us to enforce the land lease strictly to ensure safety of visitors to such a building. And some are saying that if we turn a bright eye to the situation in industrial buildings, it would be unfair to those law-abiding landlords. The other camp would say that there are uses, current uses. And what we are doing in enforcement would would somehow bring too much pressure on them. So our enforcement work is risk-based. If we resort to the biggest weapon, that is to re-enter in order to stop the illegal use, well, this will only be resorted to in one situation, and that is that the operation would incur a large passenger visitor, number of visitors. And then there are other uses with permits to store dangerous goods. If both situations are there, then for those young and old visitors going to those units, they will have to face a high risk. So we are taking stringent action against actions, against cases satisfying these criteria. But if someone is using a unit in the, in the, in the building for studio or on all, we'll deal with it like it is an office. But if you look at the land lease, you cannot set up an office. I cannot say that is in line with the land, land lease, but we would take a light approach. We would enter a charge in the title, and they can certainly apply for waiver. So we are facing two different, very different camps of, with different views. We have understand, we have talked to the planning department. On the ground floor, only can, of the, of the industrial buildings, only canteens are allowed. But why don't you allow them to run the restaurants on the ground floor of industrial building? Well, if they comply with town planning requirements, then we would consider the fire safety implications if an application is submitted. If they satisfy the fire require, fire safety requirements, there is a chance that there are, such an application will be approved. Of course, a fee for the waiver will be payable if it's approved. Well, we are talking about privatization of public open space, which is not something we want to see. I want to talk about harbor fund authority. It said that five hundred million dollars will be dedicated to the first stage of promoting harbor fund development. It's a reply number, D V B P L zero one five. The policy address is not very keen on the, on the proposed harbor fund authority. But what about this dedicated funding? And what would you say about this approach of having a dedicated fund? Is it common? For those who are concerned about environmental protection since the plastic shopping bag levy and also the municipal solid waste charging, we like the funding to be dedicated to environmental protection. But I don't know whether this has to do with the public finance ordinance because every time the government would say that we cannot have any charge over public funds like that. Mr. Chen, I'll ask Mr. Chen to explain the dedicated funding of five hundred million dollars for the harbor fund development. Thank you, Ms. Chen, for your question. We have earmarked a dedicated funding of five hundred million dollars. And that is, in terms of accounting, we have made available five hundred million dollars for improving the waterfront, and that will also cover the studies or projects. For individual projects, we have to go through the funding application procedures. If the cost is over three, thirty million dollars, then we have to comply with the finance committee procedure in our application. The point is, we have earmarked this fund, sum of five hundred million dollars for harbor fund development. I have a question about heritage conservation. We'll just have a meeting on Honglao. The Commissioner for Heritage led the government team. And the back office is in the form of the AMO. AMO is under the H A B. I think the AMO board is suffering from lack of sufficient manpower. Should I tell you, or should I tell the Secretary for Home Affairs? According to the law, Secretary, you are the heritage authority. So how, what is the line of command? And what about the resource allocation? Well, for heritage conversation, it will deal with under the, under the next session on works. Let's have a discussion when our Works Branch Bureau are with me, all right? It's a reply oh one oh, Graham Street and Corrin Street. And I also got questions on the trees, and I will reserve these questions for the next session. Mr. Chan Shing is a reply oh oh one on tender, smart tendering service. The U R A has to recover the costs in offering these services. The government has allocated three hundred million dollars to encourage owners to do building maintenance, and the U R A would be shouldering more expenditure. I don't know how much more would be sent by the U R A arising from the smart tender service. Would it affect the U R A's finances? I'll defer to Mr. Lau, Deputy Secretary. Earlier, we had a very comprehensive discussion with the U R A. We have reached a consensus, and we have set out our position clearly in a panel met, panel paper to this council. The smart tender scheme has been implemented for one, a year or so using U R A resources. U R A has promised that the resources devoted to this scheme will not be reduced because of the new funding of three hundred million dollars. We believe more applicants will come forward with a reduced fee chargeable. According to the U R A, they may need to outsource the consultancy service to handle the cases. And as we set out in the reply, we are going to provide the additional funding on a reimbursement basis. And the U R A's original allocation of resources will not be affected, so there are additional resources to enable the scheme to be launched smoothly. Second question. In September last year, the ombudsman published a report on the work of the lands department in tackling illegal occupation of government land and regularization of such illegal occupation. And it suggested that there should be a proactive inspection system and more effective enforcement should be carried out to deter illegal occupation. And now, you only got one hundred and thirty odd officers, including twenty-five re-employed retirees to enforce, to do enforcement work. How many people are dedicated to investigation of complaints? What has the lands department done to respond to the measures required by the ombudsman? Director of Lands on Manpower, well, the ombudsman talked about two things. Enforcement against illegal occupation of government land. Secondly, the enforcement against irregularities on private land. On enforcement against illegal occupation of government land, as we said in the press release two days ago, we're going to tighten up the legalization mechanism. At present, we are conducting inspection proactively, and we are doing more in respect of industrial buildings for occupation of government land or illegal occupation of government land. Most of the cases we have got are referrals from other departments or arising from complaints from the public. But we are doing more and more proactive inspections. We will ask our officers to randomly select suitable locations so that we can compare aerial photos and follow, to be followed by onsite enforcement, and we are going to do more in the future. Mr. Chan Chi Chin, it's about land grants through the private parties and S T T. I want to follow up D V, D E V B P L one one five, one five five. In twenty sixteen, leases granted on the basis of private parties for the gardens, relevant horse racing, and relevant purposes. Is one of them involved the Shatin Racecourse, one hundred and sixty-eight hectares. There was a short-term tenancy granted, as followed by a lease granted for fifty years for special land use.
And about the granting of lease on private agreement for fifty years, Jockey Club is only required to pay premium for the clubhouse. As for other users, only rent is required, no premium is required. So you're working behind closed doors. Would the government explain clearly why there hasn't been any public consultation? And that the announcement is only made after everything is finalized? Maybe Ms. Ling can supplement on the background of the so-called T G L A, Temporary Government Land allocations. About the Shatin Jockey Club, well, the relevant policy bureau is Home Affairs Bureau. The lands department is the Department for Execution. The Home Affairs Bureau's consideration was that the site is used for a race course. And it's very different in nature from other leases for private clubhouse. For the Shatin Racecourse, most of the time is accessible by the public, and a large portion of the income is contributed to the public cause. The proposal was submitted to the Seeon Council for consideration, and that it should not be viewed as just an ordinary private clubhouse. Of course, for the Shatin Racecourse, it also includes a private clubhouse, but it's different from other private clubhouses I mentioned. For this one in Jockey Club, they have paid the premium in full. So it's not the case that the government has waived premium payment and that the clubhouse should be open for public use. They have made full payment of the premium for the clubhouse. As for the renewal of lease for fifty years, as mentioned just now, many of the facilities could be accessed by the public, and that was the Home Affairs Bureau's consideration. In fact, before the agreement was signed, the relevant policy bureaus did consult the, or did give a presentation to the Shatin District Council. So Director, as far as the policy is concerned, that is whether we need to set up another mechanism or enact legislation to deal with that, it doesn't fall within the ambit of the Development Bureau, right? I should follow that up with the Home Affairs Bureau, and you're just the Execution Department. Have you given any comment? As the, as the Department for Execution, we also offer comment based on our past experience. And if the Home Affairs Bureau was of the view that this agreement or this lease was very different from other clubs like the Cricket Club, et cetera, then we agree with this view. For the Jockey Club, the premium for the clubhouse has been paid in full, and we therefore must make the assessment based on the established practice. Ms. Alice Mac, I have three, I have three questions, and please give me written supplementary reply if you can't answer all of them now. The first two questions relate to Secretary's speaking notes. First, on the supply of land for private housing, the U R A will be able to provide four hundred and eighty flats in twenty seventeen eighteen. But it's not the first time I talked about this issue. I think you've heard my point before. At present, for the U R A sites, usually, usually, the highest bidder wins, and I am an N E D of the U R A. And after acquiring land, U R A will then put it up for tender for private developers to build private flats. And you have therefore put it under private housing land supply. My question is this, have you considered that after U R A has acquired land, the U R A could perhaps work with the Hong Kong Housing Society to provide public subsidized housing or public rental housing so that in urban districts, we can provide, we can have public housing supply as well and resolve the existing problem? Because at present, for flat owners of old buildings, in the end, they end up getting a luxury flat. Well, because the U R A plays a role of redevelopment. But after redevelopment, perhaps the U R A can also collaborate with the Hong Kong H S. But after redevelopment, perhaps the U R A can also collaborate with the Hong Kong H S to provide public housing. About the smart tender scheme asked by Mister Ronic Chan, I heard just now from Mr. Law that if the U R A incurs additional expenditure under the smart tender scheme, then you can pay for you can pay for the U R A. But the point is, it requires manpower to implement the smart tender scheme. And the crux of the matter is that after setting up or after introducing the scheme, you need people to teach people how to use it, how to submit a tender, et cetera. You need manpower to go through the cases. So for this extra expenditure manpower, will the government pay for that as well? And the next question relates to question one eight eight asked by Mister Abraham Shack. And he said that some of the posts will be deleted because the work has been completed. I understand that for the planning department or the lands department, very often they have this time these time limited posts. I want to know for these colleagues whose posts have been scrapped, where have they gone? Have they stayed with the department? And also for these posts, do you have a pool of staff so that the technical post can be shared by several departments? Such that these posts will not be scrapped after a project's been completed? Well, relate in relation to the so-called supply departments and the agents such as the U R A and the Hong Kong Housing Society, they play different roles. And the U R A's role has been to take up redevelopment of old districts such as the De novo project. This is our pilot scheme in as our initiative to provide subsidized housing. So the work is by and large focused on the provision of subsidized housing in urban districts. But in the long term, where necessary, we will explore this issue further. On smart tender scheme, we've just commenced a scheme. We'll talk to the colleagues of the U R A. In terms of the commitment of three hundred million dollars, I will follow up with the U R A colleagues on whether the resources are sufficient. Next, Mister Wu Chi White. Well, in the secretary's speaking notes, he talks about the the production of private public and private housing will be maintained at a ratio of sixty to forty. In terms of public and private housing supply, for the three past three consecutive years, private housing supply has exceeded the production target. Whereas for public housing production for the past three consecutive years, there has been a shortfall and the shortfall is getting more and more serious. Based on this problem, I want to know whether the secretary will adjust the priority of land supply such that public housing demand can be met first so that affordable housing can be provided to the public in Hong Kong before other demand for demand for other private housing is met. Because other than that, you can provide private housing by M T L C L sites, U R A sites, et cetera. So Secretary, would you shift the priority so that land supply can be steered to meet public housing demand first? Second point, I'd like to ask the lands department about their enhanced enforcement action. Will that be a comprehensive survey to make sure that there is no unlawful occupation of government land? Because if you only take aerial photographs without a comprehensive land survey, a lot of disputes will arise because there is no clear information on the land boundaries. Secretary, I'd like to respond to the first question and I'll defer to Miss Ling to explain the second question. For the sixty forty ratio, it is proposed in the Long Term Housing Strategy, which oversees the overall housing demand in Hong Kong in the public and private sector. In the end of twenty sixteen, they have conducted a review and they have maintained the ratio at sixty to forty. Apart from meeting public housing demand, Chairman, I'm sorry, but Secretary hasn't answered my question. I'm saying that for the past three years, private housing supply has met its target. Whereas there is a shortfall for public housing supply, I'm saying I'm asking whether we will you will adjust the priority of land supply. Now, I this is the mechanism. And after we take stock of the land available, we can then make decisions based on the characteristics of each site. I want to respond to Mr. Wu's point as to whether we should reprioritize our land used to meet public housing demand. Let me give you one example. Among the twenty six sites identified, over eighty percent will be used for public housing. And recently, in the Kitec rezoning initiative, we have rezoned four sites originally planned for private housing to public housing. We've consolidated these four sites to provide roughly six thousand flats. So basically, we've tried to strike a balance between public and private housing supply. And we do change our priority based on a demand. Can you also answer the other question, please? I think the member is correct. In relation to these taking aerial photographs and conducting a survey, these are two different methods. We're taking aerial photographs to identify cases of unlawful occupation of government land. And if there is a dispute, we will then conduct the surveying work to resolve the dispute. If we conduct a territory-wide survey to identify the boundaries, to resolve boundary issues, I believe that a lot of time and manpower will be needed, which will affect our enforcement work, but I don't remember his comment. Mister Andrew Wen. Chairman, I'd like to ask about D V V L P D V B P L zero six nine. About small houses, over the past five years, the government has not reviewed the policy. We understand that small houses cover hundreds of hectares of land. And the government has conducted study on reclamation, et cetera. Why hasn't there been any such study on a small house policy? Secretary. On the point of anti-small house policy on various occasions, we have explained our position. This policy has been put in place for many years. It is not something new. And if we are to review the policy now, it will involve a lot of issues about land demand, legal issues, et cetera. It's a complex issue that will take a lot of time. So please understand that a lot of time and manpower will be required for such a review. For this term of government, this Development Bureau's priority is to increase land and housing supply. So reviewing the anti-small house policy is not a review, is not a priority, I'm afraid. And we're not going to conduct such a review within this term. Because the in the last administration, the former Secretary for Development, Mrs. Carrie Lam, said in twenty twelve that that the small house policy is not sustainable with limited resources. So for this term of government, in the past five years, no such review on the small house policy has been conducted, right? Secretary.
We are utilizing internal resources to carry out a limited follow-up program. So in respect of small houses and in view of the keen demand for land and other initiatives such as Land Development twenty thirty plus, are you going to conduct a public consultation on small house policy? Well, the current term of government has got just a few months to go. We would concentrate on land supply in the short, medium, and long term. You're not going to conduct any consultation? That's not a priority. In twenty sixteen, forty-five percent of small house application were approved. It's the D V B P L. One five six. The ratio of successful applications is higher than that in twenty fifteen. Any particular reason for that? There's no special particular reason. But we have said that we would assess two thousand application every year. So it's usually about half which would would be approved. It's just a change of a few percentage points. Or is it gonna by twenty percent? Do you know how much land is involved? Well, we need to conduct another survey because we haven't really counted. Can you provide the information after the meeting? We'll try to work it out. Mister Ever. Mister Doctor Yu Chong Yim, I want to follow up a question raised by Mister Ever One. There's no need to conduct another study, a policy study on small house. But there was one conducted in nineteen ninety seven. It was said in two thousand that it would be published, but the government backtracked afterwards. Can we be given that two thousand study? I think every government may adopt a different position in a conduct in in a study in a study like this. We don't we have not conducted any the study of this nature. And there's a pending J R case, so I'm not in a position to say more. All right, I want to follow up reply oh seven four. It's regrettable that no figure is provided. Maybe I can some simplify my question like this, how many small houses are related to government land? How many small houses are built on government land? Ask Miss Ling to see if she's got the information. If it's granted under P T G, I would have some statistics. But I have to do it, provide it after the meeting. One six six is a similar question. You can just distinguish the different cases basis on the basis of whether the land is within the V zone or not. Mister Wilson Oh. This government says that the housing is the top priority and they're trying very hard to get land. I want to ask some follow-up question arising from one eight five. And that is it's about the time required for rezoning. And for the one hundred fifty sites, if local people raise different views, what would the Development Bureau do? What's the role played by the Development Bureau? I'll defer to Mister Lee, the Director of Planning. Thank you for your question. On the time required to do the rezoning, if we're talking about the statutory process, there's some statutory timelines in the town planning ordinance for public exhibition. And we have to handle the views and comments received during the statutory process. That if there are different views received, we'll talk to the different parties to try to resolve the differences. If there's if we cannot reach a consensus with them, we would conduct hearings and then finally we'll submit our proposals to the Executive Council for decision. How many of these one hundred fifty cases cannot be resumed because of of local objections? And how many have to be processed by the Town Planning Board? Please give us the information after the meeting if you don't have the answer. Next, I want to talk about water in eye and in public housing estates. Is that the plumbing work will be assessed in accordance of the established mechanism? Well, that will be discussed in the next session on works is related to the work of Water Surprise Department. I will I will respond to that question in the next session. Mister Stephen Hall. I want to talk about the reasons, measures to deal with legalization requests for occupation of government land. I know the government want to tackle this problem, but you have not taken fully into a ground into account the historical context. And I'm talking about fish ponds. The farmers might have using might have been might have been using the fish ponds for years. And suddenly they were told that it's government land. And at some point, government collected rent from them and then it's rent was no longer collected. I hope you will not affect these these fish farmers. Secondly, I want to talk about marine projects. Every time when you have a project, you would trigger the excretion allowance system. If it's about a total loss of fishing grounds, it's compensation equivalent to eleven years of income. If it's not a permanent loss, it's five years of income. And then some years ago, there was a change in the policy. If it's a partial loss of fishing grounds, then there should be a gap of three years between two projects. Or in the case of Hong Kong Chuan Macau Bridge, you gave them an allowance for five years, but the project lingers on. So it's now actually for seven years. And now you want to carry out reclamation. And then there will be no three-year gap in between two projects. So you pay them five years of compensation for for eleven years. So this is really unjust. What are you going to do about this? Well, we have draw the line at the twenty eighth of March. I'll defer to Miss Ling on the implications of the new policy. And then I'll say something about compensation arising from marine projects. Mister Hall has referred to fish ponds. I think you are talking about existing fish ponds. The farmers might not know that the points are on government land. We'll look at the cases in detail. Whether there are special needs on the part of the government or whether there are special arrangements applicable to the points. But there are different categories of unlawful occupation of land. And of course, we like to collect market rent from the user. Then the rent is dependent on the use in question, whether it's indoor or outdoor, whether there's a cover structure or not. I believe fish points are in a separate category. And we will deal with these cases carefully. We're willing to talk to the operators to understand their worries. On the question of excretion allowance for fishermen. or fish farmers who are affected by projects. The Food and Health Bureau is the policy bureau for such issues. I'm willing to talk to the bureau to clarify things on the compensation system. Mister Ho Chi Phong. It's about reply DV, DVPPL oh two three. The government is going to demolish Murray Street Car Park and Ramsey Street Car Park from twenty fourteen to twenty sixteen, whether we're talking about peak hours and non-peak hours. The utilization rates have been rising all the time. So it's really the puzzling. And we know that the central district is particularly hardest hit by traffic congestion. And there is a shortage of car parks. And still, the government want to demolish existing car parks. The THB is trying various means to resolve traffic congestion problems such as the Central One Tri bypass and the increasing the penalties for illegal parking. Have you talked to the other bureaus over this? Actually, we are always dealing, liaising with other bureaus. For example, for the Murray Row Car Park, there was a careful assessment conducted before the proposal was announced, including the traffic impact assessment and the provision of car park spaces. So all these figures come from past technical studies. We believe that there are sufficient parking spaces during the construction phase to satisfy the needs. Of course, we liaise closely with the Transport Department and the THB. And the projects we propose are feasible technically feasible. Or if you look at the figures, maybe the projects are technically feasible. In twenty sixteen, the average peak hour usage for Murray Row Car Park was eighty percent for the Ramsey Street Car Park. In twenty sixteen, it was eighty-six percent. We're talking about core business district. And if you demolish car parks and the new developments will give fewer parking spaces, then it's really not sensible. We are not saying that there should be no redevelopment. Of course, your consultant will satisfy you in terms of figures. If you want to demolish the car parks, you would do it. Can you explain how come you have go down this really unreasonable route? Well, the figures are figures which can be objectively assessed. We have a look into the provision from a planned facilities. I'll defer to Mister Lee for further details. When the Murray Row Car Park is demolished, there are other public car parks near near it. For example, the Chongkong Centre has one, the City Hall has one. And the utilize, the usage is still not up to capacity. There's still twenty percent in reserve. So we can certainly satisfy the need in the, in the time of construction. For the Ramsey Street Car Park, there will be the need to provide public parking spaces after it's demolished.
Slung Hong. First of all, about the Chating Jockey Club site. The government's reply is that since it is accessible by the public, the portion for that portion, we haven't demand the premium payment. And for the private clubhouse, they have paid the premium in full. Well, if that is the case, of course, they'll be willing to pay the premium for the clubhouse. But the, but the point is, why are you allowing them to occupy that site? And allow them to just pay premium for that? That's the site adjoining the racecourse. They now have a clubhouse for leisure. Well, for the other case, I already understand your absurd practice of premium, premium payment. That site is just next to the racecourse. And they say that they need this clubhouse for recreational purpose for their members. But why don't you use a site for other purposes? Like a dental clinic for the elderly or other facilities required by the Chating community? I think you have digressed in your reply. Why is it that you believe in the coming fifty years, their clubhouse is more important than other land users demanded by the Chating community? You can't answer that. They have such a vast racecourse. Why can't they use their own site? You can't answer that question. Because the Development Bureau is supposed to oversee land uses. I don't think you're answering the question at all. On what basis do you believe that in the coming fifty years, the site should be used for a private clubhouse? And why can't the Jockey Club build its own private clubhouse underground, for example? Well, in fact, they, they did have a betting center underground and that attracted the complaint of poor ventilation. And the staff had poor health for not being able to reach any sunlight. About the other question, I think again, you have digressed in your reply. For the ratio of sixty to forty, you say that private housing land supply is also necessary. But the point is, it's not sure, we're not short of private housing supply. The, the problem is, private housing is no longer affordable. You should suppress the property prices in the private sector. When the bread, when the flour is too expensive, people won't be able to afford a home. You're talking about monopoly of the market. And we have landlords coming here to buy flats in the private sector. For speculation, for public housing, no speculation is allowed. That is why you are responsible for the supply. As for the speculation activities in the private market, it should be dealt with in another way. Don't tell us that you're short of private housing. In the future, we're going to see grade A offices and retail space and hotels that may have a low utilization. Now, Secretary Mister Ma, according to your opinion on the private sector, has it to do with the soaring rent leading to the problem of people not being able to afford private housing? Sorry, Mister Long, your time is up. Next, Mister Long Chi Chang. I have two questions. One is DVBPL zero four zero. About smart tender scheme, subsidy will be provided at three tiers. One is ninety percent, eighty-five percent and fifty percent. Is it the government which makes this decision on providing the level of subsidy or the URA after assessment? Because if it's the URA's decision, then why should you allow URA to decide on the level of subsidy? The other point about brownfield sites in reply number forty-one, the government says that in twenty seventeen, a comprehensive study will be conducted. Some so-called stakeholders would be invited for interviews. I want to know what you meant by relevant stakeholders. Deputy Secretary Mister Law can talk about the smart tender scheme and the different levels of subsidy. And then I will defer to my other colleague to take the second question. Yes, please, continue. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Member. About smart tender scheme, we have the proposal of charging fees at the concessionary rate. The Development Bureau has discussed with the URA. And this is a proposal as a result of the experience of URA in the past. Public expense is involved. We'd like to maximize the use of public money. We have therefore divided the subsidy into three levels. So that the so-called grassroots buildings with a lower ratable value can be, can enjoy a greater concession. So for a market ratable value of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars or less, they will be given a greater concession. They can join the scheme with just five percent of the fees. As for buildings with a higher ratable value, we will gradually lower the concessionary rates, or grow the concession. Who makes the decision? I think it's the government and the URA responsible for rolling out the scheme which jointly make this decision. About the study on brownfield sites, we'd like to take a survey on the brownfield sites in Hong Kong on the portfolio and the use of brownfield sites in Hong Kong. We will meet with the stakeholders which, who include owners, existing operators, users of these operations on brownfield sites. What about the public? Will public be consulted? Well, depending on whether there is a need, we'll also discuss with local, local community. What is the local community? District Council or the rural committees? And maybe both. I want to stress that this is a survey and we may distribute questionnaires or conduct interviews to get information on the operations and demand on brownfield sites. But after the survey, we will announce the outcome. Mister Lam Cheuk Ting, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on the question put by Mister Andrew Wan, DVBPL one five eight. About the successful cases of the land resumed under the Land Resumption Ordinance in the past three years and the area involved. According to the government's statistics, in twenty fourteen, there were two projects involved being resumed. Area resumed was five point six hectares in twenty fifteen. No case in twenty sixteen, one case, one point five hectares. And then twenty seventeen, one case in Yunnan Long, two point four hectares. We have had a number of infrastructural projects in which we revoked the land resumption ordinance to resume land in the new territories to develop new towns or large housing estates. But it seems that in recent years, the government has rarely resumed large pieces of land under the land resumption ordinance. I'd like to know the view of the bureau. Has it to do with opposition from the local community, from consortia? Or from the, those with, those brownfield users with vested interests? Such that the land resumption ordinance is rarely invoked to resume large pieces of land for housing development? And that it is a major obstacle to increasing housing supply? Well, in terms of our multi-pronged strategy in increasing land supply over the past few years, when we developed major programs, it takes quite a long time for Fanning North and Kootenay North. In twenty oh eight, twenty oh nine, we already started the planning study. And it wasn't until twenty fourteen that we applied funding for the preliminary design and advanced works. And the actual commencement or the actual, actual land resumption won't take place until twenty nineteen perhaps. So in terms of new town developments or new development areas, it takes time. That accounts for the situation regarding land resumption now. When, in twenty eighteen, nineteen, you will see more large scale resumption exercise. And that's our work in the medium term. And in the short term, we rely on rezoning of government sites to increase land supply. And we have planned these sites for GIC users or Green Belt zones. Well, it seems the secretary hasn't answered my question. Why is it that in recent years, land resumption ordinance even being invoked has only resulted in resuming small pieces of land? For example, in Wangchow, you have the rural forces occupying government land. And they also have licenses issued by the government or short-term tenancies granted. Is it the case in the northeast new territories, many consortia own large sites? And then you formulate the policy that, that allows them to take on development if they have acquired a large pieces of land? And that you only dare to resume land from small individual owners and you dare not resume land from large developers? No, absolutely not the case. Mister Jeremy Tam. Please switch on the mic of Mister Jeremy Tam. Thank you. Just to supplement the question of mini storage. Now, after all, it's been ten months since the major fire of the mini storage occurred. I hope that you update your guidelines as soon as possible. You should not relax your enforcement effort because you should not allow the problem to continue. You should resolve the problem in the long term. That's all I wish to add. Miss Tan Chan. Thank you, Chairman. Reply number zero one four about the General Post Office, which will be taken down. And the site will be developed as a comprehensive commercial development with retail facilities. Now, I understand that two rounds of public consultation have been consulted, have been conducted. In the first round, you may recall that much focus was placed on the Queen's Pier and the Star Ferry Pier. And for the second round of public engagement exercise, the government has taken on board the views of the public and reduced the plot ratio. It's been almost ten years. Would the government take this opportunity to do a comprehensive review on the demand for office and commercial space in Central? Is the, the demand still as keen? Because for the GPO building, we're talking about a history of forty years or so. And there are many other buildings in Hong Kong of that similar age. And it's just been recently renovated. So in relation to the General Post Office Building, is it really necessary to take it down or to relocate it? Or can we just keep it whilst we explore other options? Say we can conserve the building whilst develop the commercial space there. Well, you will see that in Central, demand for office space is still very keen. As for the plan, for the planning of the GPO's relocation, I'll defer to Mister Chan to take your question. Now, we are planning for Site Three development, which covers a GPO site. And we have drawn reference from the outcome of the public consultation of the new Central Harbour front.
Well, under this urban design study for the new Central Harbour front, we will look at we will look at office use and retail use. And it was something supported by public opinion. For Site number, Site Three, we need to re-provision the facilities of the G P O on Site Three before we demolish G P O. And some of the post office services will be provided on Site Threes to provide a seamless transition. The development of the new Central Harbour Fund would take a long time. But this planning will not be changed midstream at this stage. I'm talking about revision. I'm not asking for any large-scale revision. And if you want to build of an office building, it doesn't necessarily require the demolition of a, of the G P O building, which is still new, relatively new and functional. So can you rethink? Let me supplement. Site Three would be used to not just provide an office site, but also the pedestrian linked to the new harbour front in the design. To provide that pedestrian link, we need to demolish the G P O building. Mr. Andrew Wan. My questions are related to D V, D E V P P L one five eight. Can we learn something from the mode of development for new towns? And that we resume land in the N T, whether it's agricultural land or land held by some agents? Would you resume these land sites for public rental housing development? Well, this is one of the major tasks for the medium term. And we would use or invoke the lands' resumption ordinance to resume land. I'll ask Mr. Lee to say something about this in relation to the Hong Se Kiu, Yunnan South and and the new development areas under which we will resume private land for developments in the, in the public interest. With regard to the northeast N T development project, we have a comprehensive planning for the the project, supported by infrastructure. And we resume land under the lands' resumption ordinance to support the large-scale development. Why can't we adopt the same approach for Wangchau? For phases two and three? Are you going to adopt the same approach for Wangchau? Let me explain. Wangchau, Wangchau is mainly about P L H. The T H P and the Housing Department are the lead departments. But you are responsible for land, Mr. Ma. Well, we'll follow the policies set by the Policy Bureau. So if the T H P does not give you any particular directive, you can adopt the same approach for Wangchau? Well, we are willing to tie in if we need to invoke the lands' resumption ordinance to resume land. I want to talk about one two one. Does the Land Department have sufficient manpower to deal with illegal occupation of government land? I defer to the Director. If we're talking about enforcement actions against occupation of government sites, we have more than two hundred officers for enforcement duties. In the next financial year, we have a few more civil service posts. And at the same time, we'll make the best use of the practice approved by the C S B, and we will employ retired colleagues for reemployment. How many? It would be under ten. What about the establishment? If we're talking about illegal occupation of government land and related enforcement duties? Because they are also doing other things. If I look at the full-time civil service posts, two hundred and eighteen in the coming financial year. And on top, we are going to have not more than ten retirees on reemployment. I have to stress that even with this kind of manpower, we need to set our priorities within my department to carry out effective enforcement duties. As I have said in answering other questions, there are different types of illegal occupations. Some are used for recycling material skips. Some are used as a warehouse, or some are used for running other businesses. We may need to conduct special operations. If we say that it's illegal parking of bicycles or skips, we may have to leave those alone. We will concentrate on the large-scale occupation cases where the land is used for running business. And then we would make announcements so as to achieve the best results. And then we will understand, we let the public understand that this is going to be a targeted approach. We have to end at five fifty-five. So the last member to ask questions is Mr. Michael Tin. Well, I, I think, I know you have changed the way you deal with illegal occupations. The question boils down to this. Are you, you, it was not right to allow the regularization in the past because that has encouraged people to illegally occupy government land and then apply for regularization. You are going to grant, you have already granted some S T Ts. And I don't know how many hectares of government land has been occupied in those cases. If you're not going to renew the S T Ts on expiry, then you have to tackle the other problems of business difficulties, so on and so forth. Last time, when we were at Wangchau, they complained that their operations could not be carried out in multi-story buildings because they have machines and cranes and the like. So you need to come up with a long-term policy on land resumption and and reallocation. At present, they select good size with good transport. And there are different, smaller size scattered all over the place. And then it's difficult to develop them individually. But you need to allow them a way out. I would say you should concentrate on one particular location with a lower potential site. And then you rehouse all of them there. So their, their first priority would be to get their S T T renewed. And failing that, they may be willing to move to a new site. And therefore, the would want size, they are, they are, the free size are to be used for S T recycling. So in the longer term, are you going to stop these S T Ts and rehouse them in, on sites with less potential? Mr. Tin, we need to come up with a comprehensive policy after taking account the comprehensive brownfield site situation. Some of the operations may be housed in multi-story buildings. So we hope they can move to a multi-story building. We understand that there are some special operations. For example, operation involve involving the use of cranes or they, they may have special storage needs which cannot be housed in multi-story buildings. Of course, we'll try to get suitable sites for them. And also, the, some of the operators may want to stop their operations because of the advancement of age. We would deal with those cases separately. Are you going to identify the sites with less development potential, which are still accessible? Would you identify these sites to rehouse them? Have you been able to find such sites? Well, that's a strategic approach, was continue to identify suitable sites. And this is one of the approaches that we need to adopt. But so far, you haven't got identified any sites? No, not at this stage. I'd like to thank all the representatives from Planning and Lands Branch. The next meeting will be, will start in six ten.